With that, it is 6 o'clock. We will call the emergency school board meeting Thursday, November 19th to order. Member clerk, would you please take a roll call?
Yes, member Corcoran, here. Member Corcoran is here. Member Ketto?
Here.
Member Ketto is here. Member Olson?
Here.
Member Olson is here. Member Rapio?
Here.
Member Rapio is here. Member Tyson?
Here.
Member Tyson is here. Member Peterson?
Here.
Member Peterson is here. And member Luther is here.
All right, thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Tell them.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, additions, changes? Hearing none. Member clerk, would you please take a roll call?
Member Ketto?
Aye.
Member Ketto votes aye. Member Olson?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Rapio?
Aye.
Member Rapio votes aye. Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Tyson votes aye. Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Peterson votes aye. Member Luther votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Corcoran votes aye.
All right, motion passes. With that, review and discussion. Review of the learning models and COVID-19 updates. Dr. Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Cho. I'm going to present my screen, so give me a moment to make that happen. Give me a verbal. Do you see my screen?
Yes. Yes, we do.
All right. As I get started with this presentation, first of all, thank you for adjusting schedules on a fairly short notice to come together for an emergency meeting. And I appreciate all those that are watching us on YouTube as well. Clearly, a lot of interest in how we're navigating these very difficult times as a school district. Last night, many of us, I'm sure most of you as well, watched the governor at 6:00 PM present just overwhelming data and information with respect to the surge that we're seeing in Minnesota that is similar to states across the Midwest and frankly, across the country. Specifically, with respect to Minnesota, surges in our hospital, pushing our hospital capacities to the brink, and our ICU beds and space to the maximum as well. So based on this information from Minnesota Department of Health and the officials working with the governor, the state's in a really tough position. Along with that information and data, the governor spent some time talking about his dialing back of restrictions for Minnesota, and those include recreational activities and gyms, restaurants and bars, specifically as it relates to Forest Lake area schools. Our activity program will be put on hold at least through this notice and this executive order through December 18th. And we'll see at that point if that restriction, if those restrictions on high school sports and activities, including community education activities, our pool, opening and being available for the community and community education activities, if those activities beyond December 18th are able to open back up. So unfortunately, we're seeing a restriction with our sports program. And you'll recall last week, as we moved the high school and the community school to distance learning, we made the decision to continue with athletics and co-curricular activities. But those will now be put on hold based on the governor's orders. Again, I would like to point ourselves to the goals that have been driving not only our planning, but our thinking and model development for the entire year. Administrative team, our 30-member planning team this summer that built out an in-person model, hybrid model and distance learning models this summer based on the safe learning plans that were provided to us by the Department of Health and Minnesota Department of Education. Our goal from the very beginning was safety of our students and staff as a first and primary priority, but also maximizing in-person student learning to the fullest extent possible, given the data and the information that we're working with and as we would experience COVID-related issues within our schools. But when and where possible, the goal of maximizing in-person learning. And as we're all aware, we started the year in-person learning at the elementary level and hybrid learning at the secondary level. And I would point out that we have, in comparison to other nearby districts, we have doubled the number of in-person learning days at our elementary level. And as we've maximized learning in the hybrid model at the secondary level until recently, we have maximized in-person learning to the fullest extent possible. And I will tell you from my conversations with staff, my visits in schools, the reports from staff across our system, that there has been dynamic, effective, powerful learning experiences in all of our schools, albeit through masks and all sorts of mitigation efforts. But those aside, and once our system became accustomed to those, we were down to business making connections, building relationships and advancing learning for students. Clearly, our staff across our system deserve all the credit. We can put models together all day long, but it's our staff on the front line, if you will, that carry those out. From our teachers in the classroom, paraprofessionals, custodians, food service staff, our bus staff, the supervisors, the administrators that are providing the support and leading those efforts. It is a lift by everybody in our system to have gotten us to this day, and I couldn't be prouder. I know our families and community can't be prouder. And I suspect I speak for you as a board member as well, in the pride that we all have for the accomplishments that we've had up until now. As we look at our current learning models, currently in the hybrid model at the elementary and middle school, we moved last week to distance learning at the community school and high school. We're in the hybrid model at the step program as well, that we continue to be driven by data and the real-life experience and the reality of how COVID impacts our operation. County data, we'll see in just a little bit, an update on data. We had an update from the Minnesota Department of Health today. I'll show you test positivity rate and how that has changed over time. We'll look at local case data by way of zip code. We'll look at, we have school-level case situations that I'll be able to describe. We also monitor person-to-person spread in our schools. Another indicator for us as we look at the safety and effectiveness of our model is an influenza-like illness absence rate of 5% or greater, the effectiveness of our school mitigation efforts and our ability to contact trace, and the ability that we have as a system to staff our classrooms and our operations. Back on July 30th, we were given this model to follow with respect to determining how to start the year and how to adjust our learning models throughout the year. It goes from pure data at the county levels to looking at local data and incidence of COVID-related symptoms within our schools and our ability to staff our schools based on the cases that we see. So let's shift our gears and take another close look at our county data. On the left-hand side, you'll see the metric that we received from the Minnesota Department of Health on July 30th. And down in the bottom, you'll see when cases exceed 50, that this model would suggest that school district should consider moving their learning models to full distance learning for all students. We exceeded 50 two weeks ago when we received that report at that point, that two-week report, and that's that blue bar. The brown bar is the report that we received today. Keep in mind that the data I received today, that we received today, is two weeks delayed. So this is lagging indicator and a lagging trend line of COVID cases in our counties, Anoka, Chisago and Washington County. As we looked at this last week, we were alarmed at the rate increase from that green bar to the blue bar last week. And now look at, with the brown bar, the jump just from the last two-week period to the two-week period reported today. We have almost a third, if not a doubling, of this rate, which is the cumulative cases over a two-week period of time per 10,000 residents. If we were to base our decision purely on this information, we should have gone to distance learning a while ago. But at the same time, we have zeroed in locally, and we've considered how we are effective and able to deliver our learning models within our schools as we deal with COVID-related issues within our schools. Let's turn our attention to the test positivity rate. The test positivity rate is shown in that dark purple line at the bottom of the chart. And the bars indicate the test rate. You can see a dramatic increase in the rate of testing over time. And if the test positivity rate remained the same, then we could say, well, we're getting more cases because we're testing more. And while that is true, we are also seeing a dramatic increase in the test positivity rate. Back in June, the test positivity rate was below 4%. And today, we are in Anoka County, reported at 9.3% test positivity rate, over doubling of that rate, in Chisago, 7.7, and Washington County, 7.4. So there is clearly more COVID, if you will, in our communities, in our counties and in our local communities. It's not just a matter of additional testing. When we zero in and look locally, we look at the zip codes that we serve primarily as a school district. There are others that we share with other school districts, but these are the primary zip codes that we serve as a district. Just, I'd like to point out the increased trend line and a fairly dramatic increase starting in mid to late October to today with that trend line increasing. So as we see more cases at the county level, we see an increase in test positivity, and we see an increase in cases locally. So at this point, I would like to shift our gears to giving me an opportunity to discuss with you how COVID-related issues are impacting our schools. And you might be asking, we just had this conversation a week ago, and at that point, we locked in to continue with hybrid at the elementary and middle school. And in just a short period of time over this last week, we have seen a dramatic shift, quite honestly, with respect to managing the ever-changing circumstances related to COVID. We have more students being quarantined at home for either being a close contact with a family member, somebody in their community, somebody on a sports team, somebody that their students are interacting with outside of school, or in some cases, interacting with positive cases within our schools. When a student is quarantining at home, they're home for 14 days. And if they are not sick and unable to work, we are engaging those kids in learning by providing learning for those students. At the same time, we have hybrid learners at home, because we're on a gold and maroon day. If you think about the middle school and elementary, on a maroon day, half the students or thereabouts are in school. On the gold day, both students are at home, and then the next day that switches, gold kids are in the classroom, maroon kids are at home. Teachers are providing learning materials and learning experiences for kids on their home day, and of course, serving the needs of hybrid learning kids when kids are in school. I'll come back to the ever-changing circumstances in just a moment, but I want to shift to a conversation around what I would consider we're entering a stage and into a stage of insurmountable staffing challenges. We have teacher shortages almost every day. We have bus driver shortages on a regular basis. In fact, with our fleet of 85 bus drivers, we average between 16 and 20 drivers short daily. And if we're down 12 on a given day, that's a good day. When we're pushing upwards to 20, we are at the breaking point of needing to shut down schools because we do not have enough drivers. We've had from the beginning of the year, and that's only increased, paraprofessional shortages. These are staff members providing academic support for kids on an IEP and helping those kids be successful in the classroom, critical services. As cases in our schools increase, the ability, our ability and effectiveness of contact tracing is diminished. Today alone, I want to point you to the box that I have in the upper right here. In just in the last week, we've had one elementary school with 16 staff members out. Every one of those staff members, if they are a test positive, and some of those are test positive, some of those are close contacts with a positive, a person who's tested positive for COVID. If we have a test positive in any case, whether student or staff, that requires close contact tracing, and then those who identified as close contacts, determined by 15 minutes, cumulative 15 minutes over the course of the school day, within six feet, it would be considered a critical close contact. And then those folks or those individuals are quarantined for 14 days. Again, we've had one elementary school just in the last week with 16 staff members out. We've had another school with 11 staff out. This time last week, we had a school with zero staff out. Today, they have seven. And that is just in the last three days. And I point that out to illustrate that things change rapidly. And when things change to this scale and this magnitude that quickly, it puts an incredible strain on the system. Because when those staff were out, we are replacing those staff with substitutes, substitutes who may or may not have experience at that grade level, may or may not have immediate access to the curriculum. It is just a challenge to replace that number of staff in such a short period of time and for the duration that those staff members would be out. In just the last 24 hours, we have 19 staff members, in addition to what you see at the elementary level, 19 staff members who are now out of school for 14 days due to either being a close contact, having influenza-like or COVID-related or COVID-like symptoms, or testing positive themselves. And just today, to illustrate, we've had three positive student cases. All of those positive student cases result in close contacts, those close contacts, student close contacts, perhaps a bus driver, teacher, those folks then are out for 14 days. I illustrate this to bring us to a really critical point. I want to emphasize that we are currently into a situation where it is really insurmountable and difficult, if not ineffective, for us to deliver the learning system that our kids deserve in the current model that we have. In fact, I would suggest that we're now at an unsustainable place with respect to trying to staff and manage our schools. Let me illustrate all of this with a quick example. Earlier this week, I was in one of our elementary schools. It was 8:15 or thereabouts. School starts at 9:00. Had this conversation with this fourth-grade teacher in the hallway, and I said, describe your day to me, what you're facing as you ramp up to start the day. And she paused and took a deep breath, quite honestly, and with some tears in her eyes, she said, well, I've got three, and then she paused and thought, maybe four now, kids at home quarantining who aren't going to be in my in-person learning or in my hybrid at home, they're at home for 14 days. I've got my home learners today, my gold kids. Monday, the day I was having this conversation, was a maroon day. Gold kids are at home, learning, and then the maroon kids are on their way in, starting at 9:00 AM. And she said, here's what I faced so far as I opened up my email. I've got emails from my quarantine families, kids. Couple of them, one said, my child lost, or excuse me, my child got, has been home for a number of days, and they're done with the work you provided. Can you please call or send more? Another one that says, my child is stuck and panicked because they don't know what they're doing with the work that you sent. Can you please call and help my child? And then another email from a home learner that says, you sent work home with my home learner, my gold kid, yesterday? My kid lost it. Would you please send me that stuff again on email? Another one from a home learner that says, my kid doesn't know how to do the work. Can you help? And then again, you've got the kids coming in on maroon, and then the teacher realizes that her teaching colleague is absent and not in that day, and there's a sub. And the sub has already approached her and said, I really don't know what I'm doing today. Can you give me a hand? So as this teacher's ready to, trying to get ready to teach her maroon kids, she's got all this demand around her. And it is just not sustainable or realistic to be able to meet all of those demands in such a short period of time. I tell you this story not to give you a one-off, but to tell you that as our cases increase in our schools, and increase rather rapidly right now, this is multiplied and replicated in situation after situation across the district. Maybe on Tuesday or Wednesday, this teacher had a different experience and things settled down, but at the same time, other teachers developed a very similar reality for their learning situation. Again, we are in an unattainable situation that just isn't sustainable at this time. Given that, our administrative team has spent a great deal of time studying this situation, talking with staff, looking at the data. And we are in a position now where I believe and we believe that we need to shift our elementary and middle school model to full distance learning. And our plan would be to make this switch at the end of next week. So the Wednesday going into Thanksgiving week would be our last day in hybrid at the elementary and the middle school. And then we would transition to full distance learning after Thanksgiving. That week, Monday, the 30th, would be a non-instructional day and a professional development day for educators. What we are going to do is move a professional development day from December 4th, move that to Monday, the 30th, so that we can put that on the front end of this planning time. And then Tuesday and Wednesday, December 1st and 2nd, will be non-instructional days for students as staff prepare for distance learning. Students will receive information and guidance from their principal, and full distance learning, as I indicated, would start on Thursday, December 3rd, and will continue forward until January 22nd. You'll note that that is the date we set for evaluating and adjusting, if necessary, the distance learning model at the secondary level, at the high school and community school. So we would set the same timeline now moving forward with elementary and middle school, starting on December 3rd and continuing until January 22nd, at which point, we will evaluate our situation and consider necessary and appropriate adjustments at that time. Grab and go meals will be provided daily for students. Extension of distance learning or return to in-person learning will be based on our consideration factors that I mentioned and shared just a little bit ago. And then again, we've got a board meeting on January 21st, at which time we will discuss our current learning model and considerations for adjusting at that time. Our distance learning program, I want to emphasize and stress that we are in a new day with respect to distance learning. Last spring, last March, when we were thrust into distance learning, we, some would call it emergency learning, because we had zero time to prepare really. And we were adjusting on a dime to a whole new platform. And we did our best. Our staff deserved an enormous amount of credit for what they were able to accomplish, but we were patching things together and doing the best we could at that time. But knowing that we may likely face this day, as a school district, we spent all summer planning, and this year, planning and bringing resources and tools together so that we could launch Distance Learning 2.0 when we, if we, would get to that point. And sadly, we're at that point now with our elementary and distant and secondary schools. So let me walk through quickly what this will look like. First of all, we will have live, interactive lessons daily for all students at the elementary level. And I'll talk about the secondary system in just a moment. These will include whole group literacy and math lessons daily, small group instruction scheduled throughout the week, science, social studies, art lessons will continue, live, interactive music, physical education, innovation, media lessons will continue, independent learning activities as directed by teachers. The digital platform will be CSO for grades K-2 and Google Classroom for grades 3-6. Teachers will provide individualized assistance as needed, and paper copies will be provided as needed as well. All students will be interacting virtually and through live, interactive lessons with their teachers on a daily basis. Our goal is not to sustain learning, but to advance learning. And it is our expectation, ambition and hope that we move learning along in a similar fashion as we would if we were in-person learning. At the secondary level, the system looks different because students have, in the case of the community school and high school, five classes a day. At the middle school, they have seven classes per day. And the expectation and the plan that our teachers have put together is that course rigor and content will remain unchanged. Students will follow their regular course schedule. So first hour, if it starts at 7:45 or 8:00 AM, students are logging into their class hour through Canvas and Google Meets, and they are meeting virtually and live with their teacher and their classmates. This will also bring distance learning kids that signed up day one of the school year into that experience as well. Students will meet, as I said, virtually live each day and each class hour. Teachers will be available virtually throughout each class hour to guide students through their learning. So as a teacher starts a particular class hour, let's take a math lesson. If there's a whole group instruction for 15, 20 minutes, and there's work time after that, some kids may log off and go do their work and log on for their next class hour when that starts. The teacher, however, will always remain live and virtual and available for students during that class hour. So if a student needs to log back in and say, I've got a question, can you help me? Then they can interact with their teacher during that time. Again, same course content and learning standards will be met in each course, and teachers will be available daily for individual and small group support through office hours. So again, dramatic improvements to distance learning, and I think it's fair to now call this Distance Learning 2.0. It will be a dramatically different and improved, dynamic and powerful experience for kids. We are confident. Childcare will be available for our elementary students in pre-K through sixth grade. The program will be offered 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM at Wyoming, Forest View and Lionel Lakes. Online registration is available, will be available and ready this Friday, tomorrow, by the end of the day. Transportation and food service will be available for families who qualify. And based on the governor's executive order and the safe learning plan, there's been established priority list of who qualifies, because school districts, Forest Lake included, have limited capacity, unfortunately, for childcare. So we will begin to prioritize our kids based on the tiered system provided by the governor. And tier one includes students whose parents work in tier one-related employment and work service areas, which would include emergency service-type positions, doctors, nurses, medical fields, critical care fields. That would be the tier one fields as defined by the executive order. Tier one again would be students where both parents are working in a tier one critical service field. be students where both parents are working in a Tier 1 critical service field, or in a single-parent household, the one parent in the critical service. That would be our Priority 1. Those kids qualify for free childcare based on the executive order. Priority 2 will be students with one parent in a two-parent household who works in a Tier 1 service field. And Priority 3 would be no parent in the household is Tier 1. In other words, a parent, any parent in the household, or parents who need to work during the day, work in any field outside of Tier 1 would be in our Priority 3. We will staff our program with all available staff that can provide care and service. We're just not sure at this point what the demand is going to be and what staff we're going to have available. So we'll start with enrollment, prioritization, and then draw in the staff that we have available to meet the demand that is placed upon us. The Distance Learning Childcare Program does have a fee schedule. Again, Priority 1 students is free, but the 9:00 to 4:00 p.m. unfortunately is not a funded program by the state, and we, it needs to be, unfortunately, a fee-based program, and you can see the fee related to that program. There is the 6:00 to 9:00 a.m. program, which is a $14, and then 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at $13 for all priority areas. So there is a cost related to the program beyond the first priority area. A couple of other related items. The Ranger Academy program at the elementary level will continue in its current form. Distance Learning Program provided for early childhood and preschool students, so we will have a Distance Learning Program option for those families, and that program will be communicated shortly to those families. One Club is our elementary after-school academic support for students needing extra support, and that will continue in a virtual format. Perhaps a lingering question is, now that we are moving to distance learning, how do we determine when it's safe to return? I have to say that we have not been given clear guidance from the Minnesota Department of Health or Minnesota Department of Education on what the metrics might be for when it's safe to return. We will draw ourselves back to this, these decision factors, and again, consider county data, local data, the best we can in distance learning, the level of COVID-related cases within our community, and draw inference from that to our ability to staff the program. I will stress that our goal is to return to in-person learning in some fashion as soon as it is safe and realistic and feasible to do so. We set the date of January 22nd so that we can kind of lock that in, get us through the holidays, buy ourselves a couple of weeks after the winter break holiday. We will assess and evaluate at that time if it's safe to return, and we'll consider all of this data to determine whether it's safe to return. I would just make one additional comment, that on one hand, one might ask, you know, if we're not seeing dramatic cases in our schools, and I would argue that the cases and the scenarios that I laid out here tonight would suggest that we are seeing a dramatic shift in cases in our schools. But if one is to contend that kids are safe, and, or it doesn't impact kids, and they're less likely to spread within our schools, while some of that may be true, the impact on our ability to operate our classrooms, staff our classrooms, and staff our operations is an equally critical factor. And if we cannot do that effectively and in a way that is safe for kids and impactful and effective for kids, then as we, as I indicated here, it is time to shift to distance learning, where we can have one platform where our staff can deliver high-quality distance learning instruction for kids. So with that, Member Chair, I'd turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Massey. Does anybody have any questions at this time? Member Rayfield?
Yeah. Dr. Massey, in one of the previous slides, you said Ranger Academy stays the same. Isn't, does it, isn't it all Ranger Academy now, or what's, what are you saying there?
Well, we've got a cohort of students, 400-plus students, that are working with a cohort of teachers in Ranger Academy. They've been working in a distance learning model since the beginning of the school year. Those students will stay with their same teachers, and that Ranger Academy concept and those teach, and those students and teachers will stay together. They'll continue with their, with their learning modalities and their schedules and experience with those teachers. And we're not going to be moving those students back to their home school and place them in classrooms. Because again, it's likely, we're hoping, that we can switch to in-person at some point yet this year, and then we'd need to move those kids back and forth.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Member Tyson?
I have one question, Steve, and thank you so much for providing all that granular detail. With the childcare, I know in the distance learning model, given people are healthy, we have a few extra staff. Is that going to help us in any way if, you know, we're trying to take in more Tier 1 families?
We believe it will. In the hybrid model, we're providing childcare now, and we have a limited amount of staff available outside of our childcare staff. Now that we're distance learning, we'll have other staff available that we can draw into providing childcare to expand from Priority 1 to Priority 2, and maybe even beyond that.
And then one more quick question. Coming back in January, you know, we always have the two-week lag on the numbers, so that's going to have to be given a close look, which I'm certain, you know, will follow public health and MDH and MDE's advice with that. Any thoughts around that, coming back?
Yeah, I would say that's the rationale behind the January 22nd date, because it buys us that two-to-three-week period to let things settle down after the gatherings that might naturally take place over the winter holiday.
That sounds excellent.
Thank you, Member Tyson. Member Luthner?
Thank you. And Dr. Massey, I agree with everyone else. I love such a detailed presentation, and there's hundreds of people at home seeing the same things. I think you laid out a very strong case for why we need to go and how well we're going to do learning models moving forward. Sort of commentary we've gotten from last time was, can you speak to how any special needs children will be specially accommodated? And then otherwise, moving forward, is there a way to rate how successful we are in this new learning model? I'm not positive what would show success, but is that being talked about on an administration level?
Yeah, you've got a couple of questions there. First of all, the success of the program is based on how kids do in their classes. And the classes, the content, the standards are still in place. Our assessments at the classroom level are based on standards. So if we were in a typical year, and we're assessing math standards, we're going to be assessing the same math standards as we move forward in this model. So we will know if we are connecting with kids, if we are being effective with instruction. As I said, there's built-in time in the schedule, both at the elementary and secondary level, for office hours and time for staff to meet one-on-one or small groups with kids if they need additional instruction, the benefit of keeping the WIN program available for those kids to get additional support. So it really is based on our kids being successful in their learning. And we know that because we have standardized, common formative assessments, common summative assessments that we have been putting in place over the last number of years. We aren't reinventing learning. We aren't reinventing instruction. The medium changes, and the assessments aren't changing either. Those are the same assessments, same ways to determine whether or not students are learning, based on the standards that kids are, and our district is being held accountable to. I'm not, I think you had a different, an additional question.
Especially IEPs.
Thank you. Two things there. First of all, we are not in a stay-at-home order as we were last spring. And the fact that we're not in a stay-at-home order does permit some students to still come to school. Many other districts that have been in distance learning longer than us have been doing that from the beginning of their distance learning in specialized circumstances. So if an IEP team determines that a student on an IEP needs additional instruction and support from a special education teacher, they can come in for a period of time on a given day, a full day. It might even be determined that some kids need to come more frequently than that. And the Safe Learning Plan and our distance learning model will certainly accommodate that for both special education students and students, our English language learning students as well, can come in for additional care and additional students. We have an elaborate decision-making flow chart that's been established to make that determination for IEP teams. So it's not arbitrary. It's not based on, "My kid wants to come," or "I don't have childcare." It's based on the academic and IEP needs of the student to determine if that student can come in. In addition, I would point out that it's still feasible for a student to come in and take a certified nursing exam, because that is a practicum exam that can be done in our lab in our classroom. That can still happen, following all the safety and mitigation efforts in very, very small groups under tight control. The same with our emergency services program, EMT program, and that national certification process. Those students can come in as well.
Member Rayfield?
Yeah. Dr. Massey, I mean, one of the things I, I really like how so far, we've tried to do as much as we could to get kids in, get them in front of a teacher, help them interact. And I think we've done a great job of doing all that, that work to ensure that that happens. And I mean, unfortunately, we see these numbers, and they're just exploding. We have to do something different, right? And I understand that, but one of the reasons we work so hard to get kids in is because the issue of equity is that not all kids have the same advantages at home for learning, and, you know, might not have two parents at home, a parent at home, or, or might be in a tougher situation. How do we kind of intervene with those kids and get them the help they need so they don't just drift off? You know what I mean?
Yeah. Yeah, that is just a significant, obvious challenge for us. Kids that may not learn best in this modality, and that, quite frankly, is, weighs heavy on these decisions in all honesty. And I think you would share that burden and that agony of making these kind of decisions. They're not easy. We have hung on as long as we possibly can, but we are, we're clearly at a point that our staff just can't be effective, given all of the pressures and demands that come with the kids in all these different settings that change even within a given day, and certainly from day to day. So now that we're in distance learning, we're going to have teachers that, that open up the Google Meet and start class, and some kids won't be there. And staff are making phone calls. They're sending emails. They're engaging the support staff, the counselors, and the deans, who are also reaching out and making phone calls. We'll engage county social service, if necessary, to reach out to kids. Our English language teaching staff or special education staff are all part of that collective team that's reaching out to kids that, that we aren't connecting and engaging in. And there will clearly be some of those kids. That is, that's haunting to think that there are going to be kids out there that are just going to struggle. And we're prepared to, to put every resource and effort we can to try to keep those kids engaged.
All right, thank you.
All right. Member Corcoran?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for such a great detailed presentation, Dr. Massey. I think it really explains to the parents all the steps and all the consideration and all the, and the hoops you have to look at. And that is not an easy decision either way. Some parents are probably, I'm sure it's going to be overwhelming for some, but I think it's in the best interest of our district to do this for our staff and all the parents. I mean, it's going to be transition, but we're giving them time, which I'm really thankful for. But I also wanted to say that our staff did amazing, just keeping them in school as long as we have. I mean, I think all that planning and all that extra work and time and energy that all the staff has put in to helping our, our students is to be commended. And they must have, be very proud of that fact. Some districts didn't even try to do what we did, and we should be really, really proud of what we've accomplished in such a short time. And I think, I just wanted to thank you again, and I totally agree with everything, and I think is very well explained. And I think parents are going to be able to listen to this and really understand the full impact of all the decisions and all the time and energy that went into this plan. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Member Corcoran. Member Olson?
Yeah. Steve, like you said, we are not in a stay-at-home order as we were previously. Can you explain a little bit about what the grab-and-go meals will look like?
Yeah, we're still working out the details. Paige Aubrecht is our new food service manager, and she has brought just a tremendous amount of creativity and energy to, to this effort. We'll be providing breakfast and lunch meals daily, and there'll be a window, a communicated window for students to come and pick those up. And we will also be prepared to deliver meals as we did last spring, when and where necessary. And keep in mind, as I've shared before, these are free meals based on the federal meal program, and that's been extended to the end of the year.
All right. Thank you, Member Olson. Member Kettle?
I just want to voice the same opinion as my peers. I think we've done a really good job. As you know, we sit in a divided community. I tend not to ask questions. I tend to make comments, I guess. But we, we live in a divided community. You know, as we all know, we get opinions on both sides of the fence, to put the kids in school and keep the kids at home to be safe. No matter what we do, we're in a somewhat of a no-win situation. We're going to lose some, and we're going to win some, no matter what we do. But I appreciate that our goals and priorities were established in the very beginning and have stayed throughout this entire process, and that we hold those goals and priorities dear, and we don't change them, or we don't ignore them. Last, I'd just like to make a comment about testing. As some people on a national level might say, if we tested less, we'd have less problems out there, and less COVID-19 people. But everything that is happening right now, we have enough experience with it that it's become a percentage. And so we know that there's a percentage of people, as the testing goes, whether it's minimal or marginal or maximum, the percentage of people that go, the percent of positive has kind of remained and is, is obviously not so much changing, but going up because we're testing more. The ICU percentages are the same, and those that die are still the same. So I think in, for me personally, I think we need to just stay where we are and keep everybody in our community safe. Not only our staff, but also our families and our students. So I appreciate everything that everybody's doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Kettle. Member Tyson?
Going back to what Member Rayfield said, I just wanted to add that I think the Distance Learning 2.0, the enhancements made to that, I think, look really good. I think it's going to be much more engaging for students in terms of just visually seeing their teacher, as Dr. Massey described, being able to log off, do some work, come back in, ask a question. I think that's huge. So I'm hoping that those students that felt that this was just really tough for them will maybe give it a try and find out that that works a little bit better for them. I also think staying, the same course content is very important in the secondary level. So I'm really happy to see that. I think that's just so important to keep moving forward. I mean, so many parents worry about that learning loss, so having that same course content is really important. Also, I think that, you know, everybody has shown so much strength through this and adaptability, the parents, the students, our staff. I mean, juggling all those plates in the air, it's got to be just overwhelming and exhausting. And to Member Corcoran's point, I just want to And to member Corcoran's point, I just want to thank everybody and yes, they should be very proud. I'm also very proud of the fact that we did double our in-person learning days. And I think that that is, we can take a breath and rest a little assured with that learning loss that we have gone a little bit farther. But for that, I just want to thank you, Steve, for the great presentation. I think it's so important that parents in our community know that we don't make these decisions arbitrarily. We, we have our own contact tracing team, our COVID team, the county public health, the M D E, the M D H, I mean, CDC. So we work in conjunction with all that information. But Dr. Massey, you do a terrific job of making this very clear and we know that the path we're on is, is hopefully going to keep us, enable us to go back to that in-person learning some point after the first of the year. So thank you.
And what I would, would say, member Tyson, is, you know, there's an incredible team that's been working almost daily from the beginning of the year, studying data, analyzing, helping us make the right calls. I'm not sure we've always made the right calls, but we certainly have made them with the best intention and the best data in front of us at the time. If there was ever a question of the devotion of educators, that should be fundamentally put to rest. The, the devotion, the passion, the commitment that I will do whatever it takes has truly been on full display this year. And this is not, I mean, that's every year, but it is very obvious, you know, this year. And, and not just our, those in the classroom. It's not easy being a bus driver today, given the risk, or a food service worker, or an administrative assistant, or a custodian, or a paraprofessional. And outside of education, others are at, at, at risk in, in their own way as well. But within our system, the commitment, the devotion, the unwavering effort that has been put in place from day one is nothing short of amazing.
Thank you, Dr. Massey. I would concur. I did have one question. What are we doing for those with connectivity issues in some of the rural, more rural areas of our district?
I'm wondering if Tim Brockman can unmute and answer the question of how many hotspots we have purchased since the start of the year and we currently have on order.
Thank you, Tim. Member Kettle, I see you have your hand up.
I do. I just had a, a few minutes ago, I got a request or text from one of our staff members that asked, will it be possible to move some of the staff, including maybe counselors or paras to support Rangers Academy?
We'll certainly analyze that internally as we, we look to continue to support all of our programs. So yeah, we'll look at all options.
Member Rayfield?
Yeah, I just wanted to make the comment that, I mean, I was on Zoom calls all day for work today and it was a stressful day and, you know, and my wife, Kim, as she's helping our eighth grader with her online learning, which can be stressful. And I just feel like, I mean, there was a time in my life when I was a runner, if you can believe it, and I remember being in long races and getting towards the end and thinking, I don't know if I can finish this. I just do not know if I can finish this. And, and, but I also feel very hopeful. I think that, you know, with the, the vaccines starting to come out, I just want to, I just have to keep reminding myself, this is not forever. We can do this. We need to buckle down and get this done because it will not last forever. Life will return to normal. And this is, you know, tough nights like tonight when we have to say we have to change things and, and move them around. Every parent's going to be thinking, what? Oh, we just got this done, you know, but I don't know. We're in it together and, and staff and parents and kids. But there's an end to this race and, and I think we'll get there and we've, we've run a good race so far. So I don't know. I just kind of felt like I had to say that because it's been such a crazy day for me.
Thank you, member Rayfield. Member Olson? You're good? I saw your hand was up. Member Luthner, I see you had your hand up.
Yes, thank you. And this is prompted by member Rayfield's, as a parent and we're all parents, there's a sense of relief to know what's actually going to happen next week and the week after and the week after that, because it's been really hard to explain why someone's friend is gone and then they're back. And are they on gold or maroon? And there's just been a lot of stress being in school and they love being in school. They love seeing their teachers. However, the, even neurotypical children were having trouble with not knowing what tomorrow or next week was going to be like. And I know a lot of parents were facing similar things. So even if this isn't the news we wanted, knowing what we're going to do for the next four year, four weeks, years, four weeks really feels like a burden is lifted, even though it kind of, it pushes us into the next planning phase of how we're going to do it, but it's not an emergency. It's not suddenly my child's class is excluded and now I have to figure out tomorrow what to do. So I think most of us have juggled, what are we doing with our kids for the last couple months? And as the community cases increase, as NPR and all the news programs are telling us that the numbers are astronomical and grim milestone is their new catchphrase, I appreciate that we're going to do the best that we can to keep our Rangers as safe as possible. And that's my no question statement.
All right, thank you, member Luthner. Does anybody else have any questions or statements?
Hearing nothing. I do want to say thank you to all the staff, myself. I know it's been rather contentious at times, people questioning what's going on, where we're at. I really want to thank you. I think the relationships that were built between the students and the staff are invaluable and will prove their worth in the coming weeks. I want to thank everybody, including the bus drivers, the custodians, doing additional cleaning on door handles and keeping the, the transmission down in our schools. We have not had transmission within the school buildings that we know of. And that's, that's largely due to a lot of that work from custodians and teachers and the extra. We know we've loaded a lot of extra on people that that's not lost on anyone on this board. And neither is the decision to go to full distance. I myself go to work every day, so I know what that's like. My, my wife is largely stuck working and also trying to assist with the educating. So we're, we're living the same, the same thing that everyone else is. And I don't believe we need a motion at this point, keeping with our July motions for the administration to be able to make that decision. So if nobody has anything further, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Sound moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Member Clerk, would you please take a roll call?
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Rayfield votes aye. Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Tyson votes aye. Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Peterson votes aye. Member Luthner votes aye. Member Corcoran?
Aye.
Member Corcoran votes aye. Member Kettle?
Aye.
Member Kettle votes aye. Member Olson?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, all of you who tuned in for tonight's meeting.